Let's start the work session from Monday, August 3rd, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's always tough. Welcome please, Grace.
Sorry, Councilman.
Present.
Councilwoman Resonetti.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strawn.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
It's seven years, zero assets.
Mr. McGee, are you out there? Sean McGee, are you out there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, why don't you start. RL 21-54, please.
Okay, so you should have had the opportunity to review the small wireless facilities aesthetic design standards. This really marks the culmination of about a year and a half of work that COT has put into developing a set of standards and guidelines for the city that can be utilized when reviewing small wireless facilities and their installation throughout the city. In this case, originally, any time an applicant approached the city, all of these installations had to be reviewed on by COT when they were located on public property. Late last year, I believe it was in December, the code was amended to restrict that to an extent, just to provide a more efficient manner for the reviewing of these applications. But that didn't really quite satisfy COT at the time, and so we got to work further and looking at trying to find a set of standards and guidelines that other municipalities have utilized. And in this case, we found that Syracuse had adopted a set of standards that seemed like they would be relevant to Binghamton, and so we worked with those standards and updated them so that they met the needs of the city, and that's what you have before you today. This has gone to COT, and COT has approved it and made a recommendation of approval to city council, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering, is this, the small wireless facilities, are these specifically for transmitting 5G, or can they be used for other things as well?
It's for both 4G and 5G. But just for 4G and 5G.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this? Thank you, Sean.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Berlins here to tell us about 20-155.
All right, this is to continue funding our vacant property officer through our second round of the non-earthing.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. It's difficult to hear.
Go on, hold it down.
Yeah. Can you hear me now? This is to continue funding our vacant property officer position that is funded through the, we call it, it's called the Zombie Grant. It's for vacant abandoned and derelict housing. So we're just moving funds up from. Anyway, we're just moving funds into the Zombie line so that we can continue paying his full salary plus the benefits. And then this is coming out of the city budget. We're just moving money within the grant.
Questions or comments on this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley. Hi. Hi there. Now, is this part of the City's Rise Grant, or is this a separate grant you're speaking of?
This is a separate grant. We've had, this is our second round of funding through the Attorney General's Office for vacant properties. The whole thing started, I think, in 2016, 2017.
Okay. Now, are you able to give us an update? Because there is another hiring line under City's Rise that's very similar, correct?
That's correct. I'm also writing that grant. This is an existing position. It's been in our office for, this is our second year, as the vacant property officer, and his responsibility is working with the Department of Financial Services on vacant abandoned derelict property that has still current lien holder, so they haven't been completely foreclosed, but most often no one is living there, and we have to work with them to maintain the property, or to really push the property, or to renovate and do something with it. But that's totally separate from the other grant.
Okay. One more question, and perhaps, you know what? I will email for clarification on City's Rise, because that hiring will start soon.
Yeah, actually, it's posted already, and we've got at least one application in.
Okay. So we may ask you back for some more updates regarding that grant.
Absolutely. I love talking about both of them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Julia.
Thanks very much.
Here it on RL 120-156, RL 2156.
Jessica Haas should be also on from the Brune County Land Bank. Jess, are you with us?
Yeah, can you hear me or see me?
We can hear you.
Okay, all right. Then I'm here, yes.
Sure. So this is to authorize the city to support the Brune County Land Bank with a rehabilitation project and use of our CHODO funding, which is federal housing funding for rehabilitation at 33 Linden Street. Jess can talk a little bit more about that project, but over the years, the city, through kind of splitting up properties for demolition, or through direct funding of projects such as 47 North, we've worked with the land bank a lot on community development programs, and this would be the latest example, in a way for the funding that the city provides to continually be reinvested as part of affordable housing projects in the city. So Jess, I'll leave it to you.
I first want to thank Mayor David and City Council President Tom Scanlon for considering this legislation at work session. We greatly appreciate all the support that the city of Binghamton has given us since our inception of 2013, so I just want to say that. In regards to the CHODO home funding allocation that the city is considering tonight at work session, that funding will be used, it will be allocated directly to First Word Action Council. The land bank contracts with First Word Action Council for all of our rehabilitations under our Community Revitalization Initiative grant through the Attorney General's Office, and they will be managing the rehabilitation from start to finish, all the pre-development costs associated with the project, all the way up to vetting the potential buyers once the project is complete. So the city would be funding the hard construction costs, which would be anything from asbestos or lead abatement to the general contracting, contract that we have in place with whoever the winning contractor is on the project. So we are, right now, we are in the pre-development stages. We have engaged Keystone Engineering to begin their drawings. First Word Action Council typically will hire Keystone to do the pre-development work, and then, once that is complete, will take the project to the board for a final approval to move forward and rehabilitate the property. So that, in a nutshell, is what the city would be funding with $100,000 in CHODO home funds. But to give a little bit more background on what we intend to do with the property after the rehabilitation is complete, is we will be selling it at 80% of the area median income. These are typically individuals and families who are well-employed. They just are typically not able to afford the type of houses and rehabs that we are able to complete under our CRI grant, and those are the type of opportunities that the land bank is able to provide in our Affordable Homes program. And then, after the sale, the land bank intends to recycle those funds into an additional rehabilitation project in the city, and then so on and so forth, as long as we can go with the sales proceeds.
This is Councilwoman Riley again. Jessica, thank you for giving us all of this information. I personally am excited about the work that's being done amongst the two organizations. Can you just tell me how this property was selected?
Yes, this property was selected off the tax foreclosure list in the city of Binghamton earlier this year by the Board of Directors.
Okay, and based upon all of those properties on the list, compared to some that were also there that said "move-in ready," for example, what led to the selection of this property in particular?
The selection of this property was based off of what needed to be done. In our CRI grant, we have two deliverables. One is rehabilitations. Two is demolitions. Within our grant, there's no, there's not a lot of room for maneuver. The move-in-ready homes that were available on the tax foreclosure list do not fit into our grant, and that's why this property was chosen amongst several others in the city of Binghamton to fulfill our deliverables.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah. Joe Burns here. Does the county makes the city haul on the taxes, so do we have to then pay the county back before this happens, or we wait till the sale comes and then pay them back? How does that work?
So that's completely separate from the funding that city council is considering tonight. The land bank acquired this property through the county for $1,500. We don't typically make the county haul on the taxes that they lose. The county makes the city haul, but this project, this property is separate from that. So the city won't be, the city won't owe anyone money based off of this project.
Right. So the county didn't, because the county, if it was a tax thing, then the county had already paid the city for the taxes.
Correct.
And then they saw this to 15. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Before we go on to pending legislation, everybody got the copy of the RL that I asked to be submitted, Non-Buying RL, in support of the Binghamton Police Department honoring Patrolman Lee Barta. Everybody received that tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm not gonna, I didn't ask for this to be expedited. We can talk about this and vote on this two weeks from Wednesday. I thought we started discussion, whatever wants to, whoever wants to speak up and want to add something or delete something, please speak up. We can certainly discuss this work session in the two weeks from now also. So I thought we could, let me give you the background behind this. Individually, people at council supported the Binghamton Police Department, and I thought as a group, we should do a non-buying RL to support the Binghamton Police Department and all their activities. So this is how this came about.
So it's not to commemorate the 25th year of the passing of Lee Barta? It's more so to focus on the police department? Or we?
Angela, it's both. It's both, but it's both, actually.
Okay, so for me, I would love to commemorate, you know, the 25 years, the horrific activity that occurred. So if we wanted to, I mean, because that's today, right? So.
So, go ahead, Angela, go ahead.
Oh, no. So if that is our goal, then we would need to really craft something to turn it around to commemorate this day, right?
We've done it. We've done it today also. The mayor did something today. The city did something today.
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
I don't know, Councilwoman Riley, I did not mean to interrupt you. Were you finished?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, President Scanlon, for submitting this. I agree with Councilwoman Riley that I think that, you know, I have no problem with the honoring of Patrolman Lee Barta. I think it's especially important, as there is a community center that is named after him on the north side that really serves as a hub. And actually, yesterday, I was, I went to Liberty Street and, because there was a fire that burnt down a home that displaced 25 people, and I was talking to one of the residents on Liberty Street who said that the Lee Barta Center saved her life. So I think that's incredibly important, and we should, we should do that, but I have to be honest, and I, you know, I'm gonna speak candidly, but it seems like, at least for me, this feels like sort of a Blue Lives Matter that comes in response to a Black Lives Matter resolution. And I know that the resolution condemning hate, blacks, and racism didn't actually say Black Lives Matter in it, but the trajectory that happened in real life was that people started saying Black Lives Matter, and then, in response, then people started saying All Lives Matter, and then people started saying Blue Lives Matter. So it just, you know, the All Lives Matter and the Blue Lives Matter come in an effort to silence people who are saying Black Lives Matter, and nobody's saying Black Lives Matter more. People are saying Black Lives Matter too. So it just, for me, feels like this is kind of mirroring the, what's happening in real life, and by saying Blue Lives Matter, you know, because blue, we have to say Black Lives Matter, because black people exist, right? Like, our constituents, we all have black people in our districts. The police exists because we fund it, because we've created this as a career or a job. So there, I just have a problem with the fact that we feel like we need to honor this one particular career path or occupation, seemingly in response to saying that our black constituents matter to us. That's my take on it.
So let's go back to, let's go back to Councilwoman Riley for a minute. So what are you saying, what are you saying to me, Kelly? Do you want the Lee Barta language of this removed? Is that what you're saying to me?
Absolutely not. I think you've misinterpreted my message. Similarly to what Councilwoman Friedman said, if our purpose is to highlight and commemorate what has happened in the community, and then celebrate the lives that have been supported because of the Lee Barta Center that was created to continue to honor him, then yes, let's do that. I think, as I mentioned before, when you guys revised the last resolution, let's focus on the issue and not add extra data that minimizes the overall focus of the resolution. So if we're talking about Lee Barta, and we want to commemorate Lee Barta, let's do that. I think we have a lot of public servants, we have a lot of first responders, particularly that have worked through COVID-19, because that's the stanza here in the resolution. And if we are highlighting, one, why not highlight our emergency medical support? Why not highlight the firefighters? I mean, what is the point of this resolution unless you are trying to make a hodgepodge to, again, just bring something back to make a statement?
I don't understand what the problem is of using the 25th anniversary of Lee Barta to highlight Lee Barta and to highlight our support of the police department. What's wrong with that? It doesn't make any sense that that wouldn't be, that they wouldn't be related to each other. It's not a hodgepodge. That's ridiculous.
I don't, I don't think it's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous. What's wrong? What's wrong with using the dedicate, the 25 years to celebrate, not celebrate, but to show support for our police and what they do every day for us? I don't see, I don't see why the two can't be, why they have to be mutually exclusive.
Angela, Councilwoman Riley, and the purpose of this RL is not, it's to honor both. To honor Lee Barta and Lee Barta's legacy, and to honor the current police officers in the city of Binghamton. Now, if you don't like the language of this, then you're certainly eligible to vote however you want. If you want to attempt to change the language of this, you can. You want to add something to this? You want to believe something? Speak up. But let's be attentive, RL, to support both and to honor both.
Thank you for that. And although deemed ridiculous, we do have another work session, so I will.
Excuse me, what's deemed ridiculous?
Well, that's what was said just a minute ago.
I just said to call it a hodgepodge was. I'm not saying, I just think that the two things are related, and that's why the, you know, President said doesn't want to expedite this. We have time to look at it and to craft pluses and minuses and make it, you know, make it, you know, add to it, subtract from it, make it better, whatever.
Mr. President, can I say something? This is Sophia Resonetti.
Councilwoman Resonetti, go ahead, yeah.
Hi. You know, Lee Barta's death really puts in perspective the dangers that our police officers are dealing with every single day. He was a police officer that was murdered, and I think it is really important that we keep all of this historical data into perspective. I think that, at least most of us here, not only want to honor Lee Barta, and I think that those of us that have been in the community long enough to remember this horrific incident that have occurred in our community, I think all of us would be jumping at this, saying, yes, let's do this, and not only let's highlight what happened to Lee Barta and what his family has gone through, but also, again, the fact that every single day, we have cops out there, good people, that are now being targeted, because there seems to be, again, one sort of blanketed, sort of a way that we're looking at things nowadays. And I think that it's really important to, you know, have the conversation about tweaking language and make sure that everybody's comfortable, but let's not, you know, throw all this out. At the end of the day, it's not about, you know, Blue Lives Matter. It's really talking about our police department. I believe there's language in there that was stated by President Barack Obama. I mean, this is nothing controversial, and I really think that he needs consideration to a huge degree. Our community is watching us. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. Thank you, Mr. President. If we're talking about specific language, I would propose that I feel comfortable with the first three clauses, the first three "whereas" clauses, I would like to keep, and the second, after the, now, therefore, the second clause after that. I would feel comfortable keeping it specific to Lee Barta.
So you're saying, now, therefore, you want that resolved, so which one don't you like under there?
I like the second one that says this council honors the courageous service of Binghamton Police Department, seven fallen officers, including Patrolman Lee Barta, on the 25th anniversary of his death. I would like to keep that.
You don't like the other three points in there?
I just, I feel like it's, yeah, I mean, to me, it reads like a Blue Lives Matter in response to Black Lives Matter. That's the reason why I don't feel comfortable with it.
Councilwoman Freeman, let me be very clear. This is not a response to anything. This was, this, I thought about this probably a month ago. So, and I didn't want to put something on top of yours, so therefore I didn't do it. So this is why it's coming up now. This was not, this is not a response to anything. Let's be clear on that. So you don't, all right, so you don't have a problem with the council honors or the Lee Barta statement, but you have a problem with the other three under "whereas"?
Correct. I would like to keep the clauses that are specific to Lee Barta and honoring his death and his sacrifice.
Does anybody, does anybody else support Councilwoman Friedman's removal of these things?
Mr. President, I don't want to be, just for clarification, so what is being suggested that is removed is the line, this is that council publicly acknowledges its support to the commitment and sacrifices made by members of the Binghamton Police Department? Is that the line that we're talking about?
Also, she would like to remove, got it correct or am I wrong, Councilwoman Freeman? The council will advocate for state and federal funds to appropriate necessary resources, and also the one below that, the council will provide the tools and resource to protect citizens and officers. Am I correct, Councilwoman Freeman?
That's correct. I just don't feel, you know, I'm very comfortable honoring the sacrifice that Patrolman Lee Barta made, but I don't feel like this is in the same RL. I don't feel like we need to extend that to all police officers in that, you know, why are we choosing to honor police officers and their role in the COVID-19 crisis, but not emergency, you know, ambulance drivers, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? It just, you know, I mean, correct, like, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, the, and any sort of this, like, blanket support of the police reads to me like Blue Lives Matter, and I don't feel comfortable with that.
So we should have two RLs? I mean, that's changing the whole tenor of the, that's changing everything, so I definitely don't support that. That's, should we have two RLs then, one for Lee Barta, one for first responders in the police?
Can we have this in writing, what it is that you'd like to take out of this legislation?
I think we should put it in writing and then rediscuss it in two weeks. That's why we didn't expedite. That's why it's not expedited.
Let's, before we move on, though, before we move on, I need to know who else is supporting Councilwoman Friedman's expectation to take three of those four out of there? Is anybody else supporting this?
Well, let us, what I think, though, I support Councilman Strawn and Councilwoman Resonetti's suggestion that we take some time, we submit our revisions, our suggestions, as was done previously.
Councilwoman Riley, hold on, hold on a second. There's no sense doing that if there's not support to do that, though. We might as well decide right now. We could go through this piece by piece, but we might as well decide where the support is now, because we're not gonna, we'd be here for like three months trying to fix this, so let's decide if there's support to do what Councilwoman Freeman wants to do. If there's not, we'll leave those in there. So let's stick with that for a minute. Councilman Burns.
Can you clarify for me? I'm sorry. Don't we have another work session before this goes to the floor?
We do, but let's get this straightened out right now. This is an easy one.
It's not.
I guess it's, yes, no on this. Yes, it's easy.
I don't find it that easy, actually. There's some people I'd like to talk to, a couple of my policeman friends I'd like to talk to about it, but is it possible that we put in the other first responders?
I don't, I wouldn't support that in this case, though. This is about supporting the Binghamton Police Department honoring Lee Barta on his anniversary.
What did the city do today?
They put a wreath around the monument out front.
Oh.
So I would like to move forward with this, so let's decide on this segment right now. We can leave the rest for later. I don't have a problem with that, but there's no reason why somebody wouldn't have an opinion, yes or no, on this right now. So it is.
This is Councilwoman Riley. I, as I've said before, would like to get feedback as Councilwoman. I, as I've said before, would like to get feedback, as Councilman Burns mentioned, from our constituents, because, again, this is not Angela's voice only. Angela has an opinion about it, but I'm not here to give such if we're moving forward as council. So I would like the opportunity, as Councilman Burns mentioned, as everyone else has mentioned, to kind of draft or write down what we foresee, we could even do track changes, as, as Councilman Strawn requested with the last resolution. Some time to think about it, and, and his words were, have a discussion in safe spaces.
That's fine, that's fine, we can do that. Submit your, submit your additions and deletions to grace places early, so we have it placed before the next work session, obviously. Would, does anybody like to discuss anything about this RL and why we're sitting here tonight?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilwoman Strawn.
Hey, Mr. President, thank you. I appreciate everyone's input. There's one thing that I'm really not understanding, I'm hearing a lot of things about Blue Lives Matter, COVID-19, and, and questioning what is the connection between the two. I don't think anybody on this board doesn't support first responders, EMS, fire, civil servants, or any other category that you can come up with, right? Patrolman Barta was a police officer. He lost his life in the line of duty while doing the job of a police officer. So for example, a bullet point in the non-binding resolution about COVID-19 is not about COVID-19. It's about one thing in a million and seven other things that every member of the Binghamton Police Department does, just like Patrolman Lee Barta did every day that he worked. So to suggest that this is one thing encompassing something else is drastically incorrect. It's not a reply to anything, and it's not subservient to anything. It is exactly that, you know? And as it relates to matters of color of skin, I, I would just strongly remind all of my colleagues that we have police officers in this city who are of every background. This is not about Blue Lives Matter, or one life less matters than the other, or profession, or background. This is Americans, Binghamtonians, who arguably do what no one else in Binghamton City Hall does, with the exception of fire and first responders, which is literally putting their life on the line every day they clock in. So it's not even an extension, it's a direct correlation. So it's not just honoring Patrolman Barta's life, it's honoring his legacy, as well as what other officers, like Patrolman Westler and many others who lost their life in the line of duty for this community, and every officer who does that every single day.
Is there any more discussion on this tonight? Submit your, what you would like added or deleted on this, the clerk's office, and we'll go from there, we'll create up again in a second. Can you do the pending legislation, please?
On the pending legislation, we have RL 20-25, ordinance to amend the 2020 tax fund budget to those grant lines that are no longer active. RL 20-123, local law, amending chapter 170 of the code of the City of Binghamton to include Article III, consumption of alcoholic beverages by minors on private property, also known as social host ordinance. RL 20-135, agreement with Keystone for design services for new fire station, not exceeding $600,000. RL 20-143, amend the BJCSB 2020 budget for health insurance permits and fines and equipment rental and lease. RL 20-147, supplemental agreement number two with New York State DOT to perform the construction and construction inspection supervision for PIN 9754.04, Bald Tree over Pierce Creek. RL 20-148, aligning agreement with New York State DOT for PIN 9038.26, Greenway Sherries path on Route 434 Penn Ave into Murray Hill Road. RL 20-149, utility agreement with New York State DOT, PIN 9038.26, Route 434 Greenway Sherries path on Penn Ave to Murray Hill Road. RL 20-150, no cost time extension on state, Holly Street traffic signal upgrade and state street pedestrian and street space improvements. RL 20-151, allowing the City of Binghamton Police Department to use awarded funds to implement the Give Initiative and Fund Aspects of the Southern Tier Crime Analysis Center. RL 20-152, allowing Mayor David to use $250,000 through DOJ Cops Office to fund the hiring of two newly appointed police officers for a three-year period. And I just want to make note that I did change the RL number in our system, so there aren't doubling up for the 151.
Okay, great, thank you.
That oversight.
I'll take a motion to... Somebody speak up?
Tom, this is Jared, I have a quick question for Ken, if he's still on the line, regarding the local law on the social host.
Yes, I'm here, I just had to turn my mic on.
Ken, as it's required for the mayor to have a public hearing, would city council vote Wednesday, and then we could have that after the vote?
Yes, the mayor's public hearing would be after city council votes.
Okay, just to confirm that, thank you very much.
So, what was that, now, so we're gonna have, we're gonna vote on something and then have the public hearing after, is that correct?
We're gonna have...
No, city, city council can have its own public hearing, but when it's a local law, the mayor also has a public hearing.
Okay. And we're having a public hearing on the same day that we're, that we're voting on ours, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll take a motion to a jury.
No move.
No move.